Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are at the City Council Meeting Hall for the City of Prospect Heights on February 11th, 2019 at 6:32 PM. I'm surprised that Alderman, the former Alderman Styler, didn't remind me that I'm late by two minutes. He was very good at that when he was Alderman. He kept me in line. So, thanks for being here tonight, John. I know you're giving your report. What else do we need? City Hall, I'm the mayor, and let's have a roll call for our quorum, please.
Okay. Alderman Williamson.
Here.
Alderman Masser.
Here.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Here.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
We have our quorum present, all five Aldermen, and we can proceed. The first thing we'd like to do is to ask Kathy Quinn, who's in our audience tonight, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you do that? You're in charge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got to get some rollers at work. Approval of minutes, City Clerk, please, for January 28th, 2018, City Council Workshop Call for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion, errors, omissions, or additions? If not, roll call.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Masser.
Staying.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Motion passes, four zero, well, four with one extension. Thank you. Presentations, Chicago North Shore Convention and Tourism Bureau, presentation by City Representative John Styler.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for this opportunity. For those who you don't know me, I am John Styler. I served on this council for many years, but I have been kept abreast of the business of the council. As one of the two representatives of our city to the Board of the Chicago North Shore CBB, I am pleased to give you an idea of our functions. The CBB has eight community members and 450 business members. There are 28 members on the Board. The Board meets every other month at the business, at a business location. We often have guest speakers that speak primarily to how hotels and businesses can improve their customer service and get more business in the door. One of our functions as Board members is to seek out potential numbers. I suggested the CEA to be, Chicago Executive Airport, to be a candidate, and they did join. I have successfully remembered, I have successfully garnered other members. I am currently soliciting the Korean Cultural Center in Wheeling, like the Holocaust Museum of Skokie or the Chicago Potomac Garden. They could benefit from membership. The CBB functions to alert visitors of places of interest in the area. Our CEA gets a lot of traffic going to Northwestern. Holly Algauer of the Hilton Hotel is currently our Board President. Any questions?
Yes, sir, go ahead. Mrs. Geyer, what is our annual budget that we pay?
The Bureau.
Five, I don't get involved with the finances, but it's about $50-some thousand dollars a year.
The number is $55,620 from last year. And how often do you meet?
Well, once every month, other month.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to look at the website of the Bureau? What do you think of it?
Well, I, sure, I get the website every week.
And what do you think of it?
It's very good.
Well, with all due respect, sir, I took an in-depth look at the website, I'm sure I'm looking at the right one, over the weekend. And when I clicked on Prospect Heights tab that's on the website, I got a lovely picture, aerial picture of the Bahai Temple and the harbor next, across the street from the Bahai Temple. I don't know if that's Womet or Winnetka in there, but it was a nice picture, but it had nothing to do with, with Prospect Heights. When I finally got to the page, when I finally got to the page...
Did you check Wheeling? You'll see the same picture.
Well, I don't know, I'm not talking about Wheeling. My responsibility is here in Prospect Heights. Wheeling has...
If you didn't, Skokie...
May I, may I finish, sir, please?
Sure, sure.
Okay. When I finally found the Prospect Heights, so-called Prospect Heights website or page, it had on it as its front page, a picture of a realtor that is a resident of Prospect Heights and a promotion of her business. There was little information about Prospect Heights Hotels or Restaurants. The material on the website for Prospect Heights, or under the Prospect Heights website, was dated. And the site itself looked like, if you select it, anybody who's a casual user and is looking for Prospect Heights is not going to find it on that website. It's very disappointing, particularly since I knew we had, we spend a significant amount of money annually in paying dues or whatever the subscriptions are for that. The exact amount is over $55,000 per year. That's what we paid last year.
And Wheeling pays $70-some thousand.
I'm not concerned about Wheeling.
But the same thing you would find there.
No, I'm sorry, sir. I'm asking, I'm not responsible for Wheeling. I'm asking Prospect Heights. I don't think that's really, I'm just wondering, and I don't have a conclusion yet, as to whether or not we're getting our money's worth from it. But that's my comment.
All right, thank you. Point was made, maybe you can look into that, John, for us in the future. I will note that our own city newsletter publishes pictures and people that are not member, are not citizens of Prospect Heights with their businesses. That's not unusual. It's a way to raise costs, and promoting neighbors isn't a bad, a bad idea. Thank you. What do we have there, John?
Hi, John. Thank you, John.
Your copy.
Is that mine? Okay.
All right. Joe, let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item of business is Appointments, Confirmations, and Proclamations, and we have the appointment of Dr. Columby to the Ad-Hoc Willow Road Project Committee.
Columby or Cologne?
Cologne, sorry.
Why don't you come up, Nick? I appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, now everybody has.
So, we have Mr. Nicholas John Cologne. As you might know, my name is Nicholas John Hilmer. So, we have something in common. Thank you for coming tonight. We're here to, if you Alderman, ask you any questions they would like, and I have made the appointment that they will have to, to the Board, that they will have to ratify tonight. So, questions for Nick?
I have no questions. I think your resume speaks for itself, and I think the fact that you live right there, you know, is logical. And, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for changing your mind.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Is it okay if I tell a quick story?
Yes, Nicholas John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Appreciate you having me here. Just real quick, I won't take a couple minutes here, but my family and I live at 408 Owen Court, which is right on the corner of the court that goes back to six houses. Of course, we're right on the waterfront there of Hillcrest Lake. And so, and I didn't prepare any kind of special speech here for you tonight, but just to tell you a quick story, my wife and I and our family had been looking for a house for over two years. We looked all over the Northwest suburbs. We looked in Mount Prospect, Des Plaines, Arlington Heights, and we even went out as far as Crystal Lake at one point to look around there. And we actually had kind of given up looking for a house. And an agent that we were working with had called us up and said, "You guys have got to come and see this house. This is absolutely the perfect fit for you." And so, we did. We, like I said, we kind of had resigned to, eh, some of these things are just too expensive for us, we're not going to make the move. So, we found that house, and of course, within five minutes, the house was perfect, but it was really the location. And we hadn't even really specifically considered Prospect Heights as something that we were targeting as, for something that we were looking for. But it's that neighborhood. It's the half-acre lots. Of course, the house itself worked well for us, but just the lake was what sold the deal for us. So, we were fortunate enough to know the agent that listed the house because we were able to see it before it was on the market. Therefore, we were able to put a full-price offer in that day. And what we learned later, after we went through the process and purchased the home and actually sold our other home in Des Plaines, our agent, after the fact, was able to tell us that there were five other offers the first day it went on the market. That the price was set very fairly. We knew that because we'd seen a lot of houses, we'd been around. And, you know, we didn't have any reservation about making a full-price offer, which I'm certain that the family that lived there prior to us, which I'm sure you're familiar with, Aaron Peterson, I think he was involved in potentially being on the Ad-Hoc Committee and, you know, whatever was going on with the lake project and that, they decided not to run the price up because our timeline worked, it was a good fit, et cetera, et cetera. But they rightfully could have, it was pretty obvious. So, my point is, is just looking at that particular house, like a realtor would, on just a price-per-square-foot basis, and the value that the lake adds to that house is tremendous. It's not just a price-per-square-foot formula. There's value there and in that entire neighborhood that that lake affects. And so, I guess my point in wanting to be involved with the Ad-Hoc Committee is more so that we can preserve the lake, that we can maybe not have water in our backyard, hopefully with the construction, that's what's going to take place. So, I would say that that whole area is affected, and it affects the tax base because it's affecting the value of the properties there. So, it is really important that it's taken into consideration of how the lake waters and floods are going to affect things and how the construction that's on the agenda is going to affect all that. So, thanks for appointing me, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody have any other questions for me?
If I could, I was, we first met about a week and a half ago.
Yeah.
And I was very impressed with your aviation background. I'm a licensed pilot, have been for a very long time, but you do a lot better than I do. I fly rubber-band airplanes, meaning single-engine, and so on. What is the type of aircraft that you fly?
So, I'm a, I type rated in Hawker and Learjet aircraft. And kind of a side note, I think that a discussion that started on this anyway was the fact that I run an aviation company that's based in Janesville, Wisconsin, but we also have an aircraft base at Chicago Executive Airport, and we probably have two to three flights in and out of that airport every day. And so, obviously, we have an interest in the airport. Kind of a serendipitous way of all meeting each other here in that, obviously, there's a lot of issues going on with the airport as well, but right now, it's just about for me not having floodwater in my backyard, so.
All right, that's, that's it. Thank you. You now are welcome to the City of Prosperous Heights. You're welcome to be here, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I get a motion?
To approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second. Any other questions or comments?
I would just echo the same comments I read over your resume. I think you'd be an excellent fit, and I, being a pilot myself, it's always impressive to hear, so I think you'd be a very good fit for this committee.
Welcome. It's Mike coming.
All right, we have a roll call, please.
Yes. Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Masser.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion is approved, and again, welcome.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Five zero was the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Public Concerns and Comments, Agenda Matters, is anything submitted?
Nothing's been submitted.
Mr. Mayor, we have staff-elected officials and commission reports.
All right, I'd like to start with a happy note. I'm going to ask our Chief, please, to probably read, if you don't mind, then, an email that we both received, I think it was today or yesterday.
Yeah, I received an email over the weekend from a citizen complimenting two officers, which isn't too common. I usually get other emails and calls when people get tickets and they're not very happy. So, this one, I just take a few minutes here to read from a stranded motorist. She sent this to me. "On Tuesday, February 5th, I left work at 5:00 and headed down Hints Road, only to find out 10 minutes later, I had a flat tire. It was pretty stressful being broken down on a busy street during rush hour. I'm a widow, so that left me out of calling the husband for help. AAA was 25-minute hold time, just to talk to someone. I didn't want to panic, but couldn't find a tow truck available, fearful someone might hit me, so I called 911. Sergeant Yankee arrived first and asked me what I wanted to do, and he offered to get me a tow service that would come out. And then Officer Smith arrived, and they discussed the situation. He asked if I had a spare tire. He quickly changed the tire, got me headed home. Because of the weather conditions, I could have been sitting on Hints, waiting for a tow truck in the rain and ice for a very long time, but instead, I was on my way home. With all the bad publicity police officers get these days, I thought you should know how kind they were. They quickly offered to help save me the cost of a tow service, especially since I had to buy a new tire the next day. Sincerely, Peggy Grande." So, that was very nice to receive, something like that, which we don't get that often, so.
And I truly believe that that's what we are all about almost all the time, and certainly our police department. I have great faith and great congratulations to our people that, when you think about 98-degree weather with a bulletproof vest on, it only comes in handy when it's 24 below zero, as it was last week. So, thank you. Everything is going well there. Anything else you want to add from your perspective?
Yeah, just one thing, we have our Citizen Police Academy, which we're going to be offering this year. That's starting April 8th on a Monday's evenings, and it'll run for nine weeks until June 3rd, till at the police station from 6:30 to 8:30. So, if anybody's interested, it's for residents or employees of the City of Prospect Heights. You can contact the police station, we'll get you an application to fill out. And what we do with, after the graduation of the Citizen Police Academy, we'd like to try to get the residents involved with our police volunteer program, which you saw last, two weeks ago, where we gave the awards out for all their volunteer hours. They put in 750 hours this past year helping our police station out. We get them involved in special events, where they're sitting at booths, representing the police station, they work at the station answering phones, they do traffic control for us in several other areas. So, this is kind of a graduating step, once you get out of the police academy, Citizen Academy, hopefully, they join on as a volunteer. They also, we do patrols where they go out and help us, they'll do some vacation watches and drive around for us. So, if anybody's interested out there, contact the police station, our Police Academy. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Ludwicksen.
No comment, no, nothing to report right now.
All right, thank you. Alderman Rosenthal.
I want to thank the City Administrator and the Assistant Administrator for responding to my query from the last meeting. I think you have at your desks the questions and the responses that I provided to them. I do have a couple of other questions that are related to this, and I could wait until actually, I believe it'll be Mr. Falcone makes his report, if I can ask my questions then. Otherwise, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Back to Alderman Dolick.
No reports, sir, thank you.
Moving down the line, Alderman, Alderman Laura Masser.
No report, thank you.
Well, we can, we can move on with the City Clerk.
I just want to thank everyone from Prospect Heights who participated in our Prospect Heights Rotary Club fundraiser Classic 5,000 last week. It was a great success, we were sold out, everybody had a great time, we did some great fundraising, and it'll help us to provide scholarships for youth and, and adults, and also to provide funds for us to, to work with the underprivileged and, and needy in our community. So, I thank you.
All right, then Alderman, who's left?
Williamson.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment on Alderman Rosenthal's comments about the CBB. I've been going through this website here since he started mentioning it and talking about it, and the City of Prospect Heights is very ill-represented. The only two things that come up are Algours and Crown Point Plaza, and I understand they're on the Board, but they should be representing everything that is Prospect Heights, and I agree with you, for the investment we're making, you're getting minimal return for it.
Excuse me, may I say something?
Sure. How are you, John?
Our membership. How many members do we have, other than those two that you mentioned?
I don't know.
Businesses. We don't have it. They don't join.
Our merchants don't join.
Could you go to the podium, please?
Well, you know, the, these are not excuses, but the point...
When you, when you look at, when you look at Skokie, when you look at Evanston, Evanston has the most members.
Right.
I think there are nine people representing Skokie, or Evanston, on the Board. There are only two representing us. There's one representing Wheeling. Wheeling has more businesses involved with the CBB than, than we do.
Well, I think the question given is, how do we get more representation?
It costs money for them. They don't want to pay the money to join.
Well, we pay $50,000.
We do, we do, but business, our businesses don't.
Right. Well, our businesses, sad to say, don't even join our Chamber of Commerce.
I know, I know.
Prospect Heights.
I know, we get that report, too.
Wheeling Chamber of Commerce. We have nine members, talk about number nine, and Wheeling, of course, has about 40.
Yeah.
So, that's an area that needs to be more shepherded.
We've solicited many of the businesses here in town, and they, they just refuse to it.
I understand.
I went to a function at the Korean Cultural Center, I met Dr. Kim. I told him about the, he said, "I'm interested." I gave him the same folder you have, he said, "I'll look into it, see if my Board approves it." And he has to find out what the membership fee is. There is a different kind of business than a restaurant or a hotel. But we don't have any hotels, other than the Hilton and the, and the Crown.
That are members.
That are, that are members.
Right.
So, if we don't have the, if we can't get the membership... Well, then, if you permit me, Mayor?
Well, we're kind of over this. But let's talk to John later, because I would like to talk to you later about how to drag business in our, in our favor.
It's a question of what value they see in it. Well, if you look at that book and look at Prospect Heights, you'll see the difference between that and looking at Evanston or Skokie. I am not, sir, I am not comparing the two. I am saying to you that there's a question of value perceived by our businesses in Prospect Heights. Where does our money come from that we pay, that the city pays? Okay. Where does the money come from?
Well, let's, let's drop this for a moment. Let me say the last word, if you don't mind.
Okay.
If we dropped our membership in this group, we could not be collecting the money that we are collecting from the hotels.
That's right, that's right.
It's a forced issue, we didn't have a choice to begin with.
The money is coming right from the hotels that we pay.
In order to close out CBB at the time, we were required to join the North Shore, and we were required to pay the $50,000, and we felt we were far ahead because then we could keep all the money that was being per room, or $5 per occupants' room, and keep all the money without infrastructure, let's call it, for people working here and for people trying to generate things, et cetera. But let's see if we can do a little bit better. Let's leave it at that.
If I could finish, just comment, say, John, it certainly was not meant to be an attack on you by any stretch.
No, no.
I'm just saying that we're investing $55,000. It's, it's a good chunk of change. What kind of a return are we actually getting on it? We're seeing representation of two hotels, and I believe that not, those are not the only two hotels that are contributing. It's also the other four hotels on that strip that are contributing as well.
All right.
And they're not, they're not well-represented.
I think you have to look at the return being the ability to collect all the money from hotels.
I understand, I do understand your point.
We're paying 50 grand to probably get 150 grand, so.
But our, to my point, we should be holding them responsible for putting out a better product. This, this website, albeit you may think it's okay, is horrific. It's difficult to navigate, it's slow, and you pull up Prospect Heights and you get two things. I mean, it's just not a good website.
All right, I think we made a point, carried a message, if you would, the message of the Council, back to the people that are really, the people that are responsible. And let's go from there.
I just want to make one comment, if I can.
Yes, go ahead.
You had mentioned the Chamber. We have several hundred members of the Chamber of Wheeling and Prospect Heights. I don't have the exact statistics in front of me, but we have several hundred members.
Total members.
Total members.
There's only nine for Prospect Heights.
There's more than that, but I'll, I'll get you the statistics.
Last time I looked. All right, thank you. City Treasurer, are you available? The man behind the glass. You wore your jacket tonight so you wouldn't have to turn up the heat for me.
Right. That's right. I wasn't planning on coming out, but because of all this, I just would like to mention that Home Rule enters into this whole thing. Because of the fact that it, Home Rule would have given us a little bit more money for our budget for our, our, what am I thinking of? The thing's on the agenda, our...
CBB?
No. The, oh, my gosh.
Capital improvements?
Yes, capital improvement, thank you. I couldn't think of that word. But anyway, besides that, the budget for the hotels is, to a certain degree, sponsored by the state, right? Isn't that the, what you're talking about is the money that we get from the state for having a, belonging to a CBB?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, but the money...
It's why we get money, because we belong there.
Mm-hmm. But the money that we get from the hotel tax is separate. I think, I don't think that enters into the equation of whether we're entitled to that money or not. I think we should still, we could still get that money allocated to us if we didn't belong to the CBB. Mr. Attorney, is that correct, you think?
The, the city, the, the city would have greater control over the money that's collected if it was Home Rule.
If it was Home Rule, right. But I mean, I'm saying, we would be still entitled to our 5% hotel tax.
Right.
Even if we weren't a member of the CBB.
Correct.
That was really the point I was trying to make. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, let's back up. We've got the elected officials, Mr. Ducharme, our CFO. Let's start with you.
Michael Ducharme, Director of Finance, on the agenda this evening. We have a preliminary capital improvement plan, five-year capital improvement plan, which we'll be discussing shortly.
And we will be doing it shortly. All right, Director of Public Works, Mark Roscoe. And we will be doing it shortly. All right, uh, Director of Public Works, Mark Roscoe, please.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, uh, we have our Deputy, uh, City Administrator, uh, Mr.
Mr. Peter Falcone.
Are you done?
There we are. Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I've got a couple items for you, uh, or to discuss at least. Uh, the city had a, a very productive first meeting with our new, uh, waste hauler, Flood Brothers, which will take effect. Uh, the switch off between Republic and Flood Brothers will take effect, uh, January, July 1st. Uh, so we had a very good first meeting with them about the transition that's going to take place. Uh, one of the items that we did discuss, uh, and the mayor wanted me to bring it to the attention of, uh, Prospect Heights community, is something that's happening all over with all municipalities and all waste haulers. Uh, the recycling, uh, recycling has gone from a revenue stream for municipalities to pretty much a dry creek, uh, as a matter of fact. Uh, we actually get no money anymore from recycling, and it's, it's because unfortunately, people, I think, try to, uh, people are thinking that they're doing what's best for the environment by trying to recycle as much as possible. Unfortunately, when they do that, uh, waste gets into the, the recycling stream, and it pretty much taints all the recycling that, uh, is in that stream. So, one of the major pushes by all the waste haulers are new recycling guidelines that all the municipalities are going to eventually adhere to, uh, and what we're trying to do is get information out to our residents in particular, because, uh, one day in the near future, uh, when you put something in your recycling container that is not recycling, uh, and it taints everything, uh, in that recycling container, you will get a sticker placed on that recycling container saying that this is garbage and they cannot accept it. And then it will be the responsibility of the homeowner to take that recycling that is tainted, that is now garbage, and actually put it in their other container and throw it out. We do not want that inconvenience to happen to our residents, so what we're trying to do is get ahead of this, uh, with the new recycling guidelines. Uh, there's information on our website. There's also information on the e-news. Uh, we have printouts upstairs, but I just want to go through and, and kind of give a broad strokes of, of what the new recycling guidelines are, so that residents can kind of get, uh, in the habit of following those guidelines, so that in the future, when they do start to break, uh, start to, to crack down on this, on clean recycling, that it's not a shock for anybody. So, recycling guidelines, they're pretty straightforward. As, as always, paper, metal, glass, and plastic bottles are all recyclable. The issue, however, though, is anytime anything is tainted with food, it needs to be clean and dry. So, if you're talking about metal, aluminum containers, cans, foil, paper cardboard, paper or cardboard, glass or, uh, jars and bottles, or plastic bottles of any kind, please clean them out, dry them, and that's what goes into recycling. When you put, uh, a pizza box, everyone thinks pizza boxes are recyclable, and they are, unless, of course, there's any food material on that pizza box, uh, any oil, any cheese, that deems it as unrecyclable and garbage. At some point down the line, they will get strict enough where if you're throwing a pizza box in your recycling and, uh, there's any sort of food material on it, they will not accept that recycling. So, a, a phrase that the mayor kind of, uh, and I came up with is, is very simple. When in doubt, throw it out. For the simple matter is, it's better for you to throw out something that could be recyclable, just, uh, and throw it into garbage, than to throw something that isn't recyclable into your recycling and taint all the recycling that's in there. So, uh, please, the, the, the city will get more information out about these recycling guidelines. You can always go on our website. You can subscribe to our e-news. This information is in there, uh, because we want to make sure the residents are fully aware that at some point, they are going to enforce these recycling guidelines. Um, the second item that I have, uh, is what Alderman Rosenthal had alluded to. At the last meeting, a request was made for, uh, a report about our reverse 911 system. Uh, people may, people may not know about our reverse 911 system, but what it allows the city to do is to contact our residents for emergency notifications. Now, these emergency notifications could be something as simple as a burn around our slew, uh, or something more severe, uh, like, uh, cold weather, or even in the case we just had with the cold weather, we had garbage delay. Uh, this information that, uh, is in the 911 system can only come in by two methods. The first method is if the resident themselves signs up for the program. Now, there is a link on our website, but the city of Prospect Heights does not collect your information. It's simply a pass-through link that goes from our web, from, from our website to the Everbridge website, which is the, the system that we use for reverse 911. The only, the only other way for your information to be put on the system for the reverse 911 notification is through your tele, telecommunications company, uh, the 911 information. So, those are the only two methods that your information can get on the system. So, if you're not receiving 911 notification, or reverse 911 notifications, and you want to, apparently your telecommunications company isn't passing that information along for a, a landline, or if you have a cellphone, that information wouldn't automatically be included. So, please, go onto our city website, uh, go onto our e-news. There's links on both of those, so that you could sign up for, uh, emergency notifications. Now, the questions that were raised at the last meeting and what Alderman Rosenthal had brought up, uh, were not only how do you get onto the system, but who has access to the system. Now, currently, uh, the, the Everbridge notification system is maintained by, uh, our dispatch system for our police department. That's a Northwest Central Dispatch system. Uh, their personnel at, at the, at the central dispatch system and select, uh, city employees have access to the Everbridge system for notifications. Those employees are our new police chief, Jim Zalaki, uh, police officer, Party Deol, and myself, Peter Falcone. We are the only ones that have access to it. The only person that, only other person that had access to it was, uh, former chief of police, L. Steph. So, those are the only four that have access to the system and are able to, to implement a reverse 911 notification. Uh, the next question was, uh, if the city, uh, data first goes to the city, how does, how does that information get transmitted to the service center? Uh, again, the city of Prospect Heights does not take your information. It's just a link, so all your information gets automatically uploaded to the Northwest, uh, to the Everbridge notification system. Uh, the name of our service center that maintains it, like I said, is Northwest Central Dispatch System. Uh, as far as their reputation for protecting this data, uh, they are primarily, the Northwest Central Dispatch System is comprised of local police departments and fire departments. Um, so these are our first responders, so I'm fairly confident that the reputation of these people is, is intact. Uh, some of the members of the Northwest, or all the members of the Northwest, uh, Northwest Central Dispatch System are Arlington Heights Police and Fire, Buffalo Grove Police and Fire, El Grove Village Police and Fire, Hoffman Estates Police and Fire, Inverness Police, Mount Prospect Police and Fire, Pelotine Police and Fire, Prospect Heights Police, Raleigh Meadows Police and Fire, Schaumburg Police and Fire, and Streamwood Police and Fire. Uh, again, who has access from the city staff or city officials to the data at this point? Uh, it's only police chief, Jim Zalaki, party, police officer, Party Deol, and myself, uh, as the assistant administrator. Uh, who can authorize the use of the data that's stored with, with our Everbridge notification system? Uh, the information that's on the system that is inputted either by the individual, uh, residents or the 911, uh, 111 telecommunication information, uh, can only be used for notifications. And that, those notifications are either authorized by the mayor or by the city administrator. So, whenever there's a, a burn notice, it's generally through Joe. If it's something like a cold weather advisory, that's generally through the mayor. And I'm the one that actually does those, uh, does those notifications. Uh, as far as a log of these emergency notifications, uh, the system itself actually logs these. So, there's a record. There's a, a, a data footprint for all these. Uh, since I started just over three years ago, uh, we've had roughly seven notifications that have been sent out, primarily by myself. Uh, these were three for burn notices, two for extreme cold warning, and two for garbage delays. So, we know exactly, uh, when these were sent out, uh, and to whom they were sent out. Uh, the question was also raised about the robo-call that happened about the, uh, the Piper property sale. Uh, the speculation on that from, from staff, because we've researched this, is that that robo-call was from an outside party who most likely used, uh, bought telephone data for the contact information. Uh, our rationale behind this belief is that the Everbridge system shows no, uh, footprint whatsoever of this robo-call. So, we have no evidence that the Everbridge system was used for this, um, for this robo-call. Also, the data that is on, uh, the, uh, the Everbridge notification system, uh, is very specific. On this robo-call, staff members that have placed themselves on, uh, the city of Prospect Heights notification list, myself included, uh, never received that property robo-call. However, other, uh, staff members who aren't on the notification list, uh, did receive that robo-call. So, the, the data just doesn't match up. So, the data on the Everbridge system obviously was not used for that, because there are people who aren't on the system that were getting it, and there's people that were on the system that weren't getting it. So, the, so we believe that the robo-call had to be most likely bought local information from some other source. Uh, and the last question was, what type of features and functions might we as a city, uh, consider implementing to improve the security, uh, of the resident data on the Everbridge system? Uh, well, as far as the Everbridge system goes, there's really nothing we can, we can advise. Uh, the system is, uh, it, it's only accessible by a, a select few people. Uh, like I said, it is primarily used by first responders, both police and fires, so we're very confident in the system's security, uh, and we would not, we don't think there's anything we could really do to, to, to benefit the system any more than it really is. Uh, there were two follow-up questions, if the Alderman wants to do that now?
Uh, yes, uh, if that's okay, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, do I understand it then, that once it gets to Everbridge, whatever that data is that's there, we don't have, do we have access, or does anybody have access to download it from the city?
Sure. Uh, when a notification is sent out, uh, like the most recent, uh, cold weather advisory or the, uh, the garbage delay, uh, what we can run as the users, uh, the city can run a notification report. Uh, and what that report tells us is who was notified, in what manner that, uh, person was notified, and the outcome of that contact. And I, and I want to stress this, uh, it'll have, in my case, uh, when I signed up for the notifications through Everbridge, I signed up with my, my cellphone, my home line, uh, my email, and I'm also able to get texts. So, what the, what the notification report does after you send out a notification, is you can see how Peter Falcone was, was contacted, and what method of, of contact he used to get that, to get that notification. If it was, if it was on my cellphone, or if it was a, uh, a, um, voice message, or if it was an answer machine, it actually shows up as answer machine. So, the system is very intuitive and it knows how, uh, how people were contacted, uh, and if, if in fact, they answered the phone and hung up. So, we can run a report after the fact that shows how the people were contacted and the outcome of that contact.
Does that report contain data as to, uh, let's say, the person's email and/or telephone number? That it was?
It, it would have whatever information that person has, has supplied. Uh, like myself, it has all my information on there. It has my home number, my cellphone number, uh, and my email address, because I have all three of those on there. Because.
So, that's.
That, that notification report, again, remember, is to, to let us know as a city how our residents have been contacted about a specific, uh, emergency event.
But then those, those confidential data elements are then become available. Am I right?
If, if we were to pull that information off of the site and save it, correct, but that would be the same of any other data, like the e-news data, uh, or any other information we have from, whether it be vehicle stickers or our, uh, our finance program for utility billing, uh, vehicle stickers and animal licenses.
And that gets to my second question. I know that we collect that data, because when I fill out these forms, I'm asked for my email address and my telephone number. Um, how are those protected, or do we protect them?
Okay. Well, anything that has, uh, residents' personal information or confidential, confidential information, uh, is all protected, uh, by the users who are, who have to use that information on a daily basis. So, um, for our front desk personnel who handle, uh, utility billing, vehicle licenses, um, animal licenses, all that, uh, they have to log into the system under their name. Uh, they're given certain, uh, authority in order what to look up, so that they can do their daily jobs. Uh, just like with the Everbridge system, uh, I have access to it. Uh, Chief Zalaki has access to it, and Officer Deol have access to it. No one else can access that information. So, what we try to do is keep the access very limited. Um, we also, as a city, uh, have, uh, numerous policies in our, uh, personnel policy manual that deal specifically with confidential information. Um, so, there's a two-step approach. Uh, you keep the circle tight, uh, and then oversee the people who are, who are maintaining it, and, uh, knock on one, we haven't had any breaches or anything yet, but i- if there's any chance that, or any, uh, employee that oversteps or does something they're not supposed to do, uh, there's disciplinary measures that can be taken up to, and including, uh, termination of employment.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to hold up the meeting just with this conversation. Um, I would like to follow up with, uh, Mr. Falcone afterwards, at some time in the near future, uh, in, uh, discussing some other details about how we maintain our secure data, if that's okay.
All right, please, I'll handle it that way. Thank you. Uh, moving on, uh, anything else, Peter?
Uh, no, that, that is it, unless someone has a question.
Go ahead.
Recycling and the garbage, uh, conversation that you had. Um, I had asked you a little bit ago about.
A simple copy.
The mist pickup, uh, during the cold snap, and discussing some form of a credit with Republic. Did anything come of that?
There is a language that, uh, I believe could be interpreted that we can, uh, sorry? You can hear me, correct? Uh, there is language in the, in our current contract with Republic. I do believe that, uh, we could pursue that. Um, that will be, I, I just want to make sure. I don't want to overstep my bounds. That'll be a decision, a discussion with Joe, so that we can draft.
We, we will make that request, absolutely. We'll do it tomorrow.
Okay. I only ask it because the service wasn't rendered, and I think the residents deserve the credit for that.
The Republic will be contacted.
Thanks.
All right, uh, Dan Peterson, uh, Building and Zoning.
No additional report tonight. We have a few items on the agenda later.
All right, city clerk, anything you had to add?
Um, I just wanted to add to Peter's, um, comments that the, the confidential information also cannot be foiled, so that is another protection.
All right, uh, city administrator?
Uh, no report. Are we ready to go to the?
All right, I think so. Well, let's move on down the line. Karen?
No report.
No report, and did we get everyone except our attorney, right?
Yep.
No report?
No report.
All right. All right, let's proceed then.
Okay, uh, item nine is a workshop item. It's the budget discussion, preliminary capital.
Yes, sir.
I would ask that we move to new business, because I'm sure everybody's interested in our capital improvement program, but probably not as much as I am. So, I think we can go through theirs first, and we don't have to sit here and, and go through all that. If that's okay?
All right, so how do you want to proceed? Which number?
I think, um, item 11 is something that's going to wait until something passes and item 12. So, why don't we start with 12 and move forward from there?
All right. Mr. Administrator, do you want to do that?
Absolutely. Um, well, we, we've spent a few months on item 12A. This is, uh, uh, ordinance approving the amendment to Title V, Chapter 2 and 7, related delivery service. Requested waiver of this. Um, we, the, uh, petitioner has asked, uh, in the interest of, they, they've waited some time. They'd like to get this going, so they're asking for first reading.
I make a motion, we waive first reading of ordinance A, or, or 01835. Oh, I'm sorry.
1901.
Zero, 1901.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion? Are we good, good with it? Then let's have a roll call, please. Oh, we don't need anything. I'm sorry, this is first reading. No action required.
Well, we do, Mayor, we do need a, a vote on the motion to waive first reading that was made. We have to vote on it, though. Right. There is a motion and a second, so we just need a, a roll call on the. There is a motion and a second, so we just need a, a roll call on the-
But where's, where's the actual, that I see? But isn't the next step then to approve it?
No, yeah, but we're, we're not there yet. We need a wave first reading.
All right, I got it. Okay, no action required there, except we want to have a motion to accept waiver of first reading.
Was already made.
We have.
Yep. So, roll call.
Okay, so Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Joe under item B.
Yes, sir. This item is ordinance approving the text amendment to Title V, Chapters 2 and 7. This, this allows livery services as a permitted use within the zoning district.
Motion that we approve?
Second.
Items, item O1901.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Joe?
Item C is, this ordinance allows the special, special use permit for way-to-go limousine to operate a livery service within the zoning district at 1326 North Rand.
All right, first reading, we're looking for a second reading, so we will have a motion to approve the first reading waiver.
So, move.
Second.
We have a first, and we have a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to item D, Joe.
And item D provides a second reading of this special, special use permit order.
Motion to approve ordinance O1902.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Item E, Joe?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Mayor. At this time, I think it would be appropriate that item A and/or old business can be resolved because of the passage of these special uses. This pretty much makes that request null and void. Mr. Everhart, do you have anything you'd like to say on that?
Well, I'd like to withdraw my application, the original one for special use. I have to let your-
So, I think we can remove that from the agenda, then?
All right, so we, we don't need to address item 11A as the applicant has withdrawn his application.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. All right, on to 04.
Item E is, this is an ordinance approving a text amendment to Title V, 7, related to warehouse use, allowing warehouse use as a permitted use within the zoning district. The applicant is Connor Commercial Real Estate, represented and present tonight if you have any questions or concerns. And this is just the first reading of this matter.
All right, and there is no second reading coming up?
No, sir.
All right, so we don't need a motion to approve. Someone want to address this, or not?
Hi, City Council. And Mr. Mayor?
You are.
My name is Brian Quigley. I'm with Connor Commercial. And I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed 150,000 square foot industrial building on Piper Court, 25 and 35 Piper Court. We went to planning and zoning in January, and we got unanimous approval on the project. And so, thank you for all your work on this project so far. Tonight, I've got with, with me our civil engineer, Brian, and our traffic engineer, Loe. And so, if there are any questions on the project, civil engineering-wise or traffic-wise, we're able to answer them tonight.
All right, anyone, please?
Just a real quick summary. There was concern raised by the PZBA related to traffic flow at the S curve on Piper Lane, which the engineers have committed to work with our engineer to correct the geometry of that to assist in traffic flowage. There was also discussion about potential traffic stacking at Wolf Road at peak afternoon rush hour. And again, those were well addressed in the traffic report created by the applicant's traffic engineer, and are things that I believe can be worked out between the applicant's engineering staff and our city engineer.
We don't see any road improvements, any off-site road improvements required. And so, we think we've addressed the issue well, and there won't be any traffic problems.
And just to confirm, truck traffic will only proceed west towards Wolf Road. They will not head east on Piper Lane?
That's correct.
Towards the apartments. I believe that, that was discussed before, but I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, that's our intent, and signage, we could put signage up, eliminating or preventing any trucks from going east on Piper. There is, there's nowhere for them to go.
Right, okay. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Right, and I can say that they're not going to go that way.
They might go once, and they won't go twice.
Street, the side street, the main street.
Yeah.
You're going to try to maneuver a truck around there, and they won't do it twice.
I agree.
Can I, just to add, just to bring that up, for the reason that I'm not, just talking about like, large 18-wheel trucks, even a smaller, like a Stepfan, that would be making pickups and deliveries, they too will not be heading east.
We can put that signage up, the, be the east end of the driveway?
Kevin, we put that language in the contract, too, that there is no traffic to head eastbound, did we not?
I believe there is, there is some language in the PSA regarding truck traffic going eastbound on Piper.
Okay.
But I'd have to review it.
So, Kevin, you can have a, you can have a city ordinance place sign from an exit of private property if that's acceptable, so that you can't turn right just out of that, out of that parking lot.
And Dan, we can work in terms of imposing traffic controls on the roadway itself, correct? So, it's something we can, we do if necessary.
Correct. We can look at signage along Piper Lane heading east. We can look at the, coming up to the S turn from the west to say that traffic, truck traffic only into the parking lot. We can, there's a number of issues, and we've had assurances that the applicant testified at the PZBA to do whatever it takes to make sure the traffic control signage is in place.
All right.
Just another quick question. The, this ordinance calls, or the special, it's not a special use, it's a demanded use for warehouse use. Is there a reason you chose the term warehouse? Are you, are you, does that, maybe it's a question for Dan, does warehouse restrict the use of that in any way that might be detrimental, or either to the owner or to us?
No. In my, in researching the B4 special use category, it's an industrial office use, but yet it didn't list warehousing as an approved use, which is typically every other. So, to make a potential user legal, we needed to make sure warehousing was there. It also assists the applicant in marketing the project to an end user that would have maybe that type of a use. So, our current code, the way it was written, prohibited anything other than basically office or very high-level industrial.
Okay, thank you.
But the intended use is for office and industrial. We'll, we'll have some office within, within the warehouse.
I, I just thought it was odd that we, I didn't realize that we had limited ourselves in the original code, and we're just clarifying to expand warehouse, which is a lesser use than manufacturing, or something else that's already allowed anyway. So, it's not, we're not expanding it to something that would be, that we wouldn't want to see. But since you're standing there, what do you have left to do, now that you're going to get your approvals from us, your preliminary engineering, is there any other permits or, or authorizing bodies that you're waiting for approvals from?
Once we have our full entitlements, we've got our, we've got our capital ready to go to close. And so, we'll submit for final, we'll, we'll submit for permit, or we'll submit our, our working drawings, we'll release our architect on working drawings as soon as we have this approval.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, if there's nothing standing in our way entitlement-wise, the 6B needs to be approved. There's a time limit after closing on the property. It's eight weeks, something like that. And so, that's really the only thing that we're going to be looking for post-closing, in addition to a permit.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
So?
Item F follows this. This is the ordinance approving the preliminary plat, preliminary engineering appearance review, and granting special use permit for the aforementioned project, applicant Connor Commercial, 2535 Piper Lane. And this is also first reading.
Right there.
What is the item? 1904?
05.
05. Under 01905. Any questions? You don't need a motion, it's first reading?
So, move.
No, it is not really-
Just a first reading.
Sir, may I have just one second?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that is up on the screen is the applicant's site plan, and this met with very positive reactions from both the residents at Quincy Park when the applicant held a homeowners meeting, and additionally at the plan commission for the extensive amount of landscaping along the southern property line, and the various landscaping features throughout the property. They did a good job of showing the berming, the fencing, the landscaping that will provide screening to the residents of Quincy Park. And I just wanted to point it out that it was well-received from an appearance review site plan and application point. So, just if there was any questions, any of the Alderman had.
Looks good.
Okay, you're good?
Yep.
Thank you. So, no motion, let's keep going.
Item G is a special use permit for private truck parking lot. The applicant is Sterry Trucking in the B4 Office Industrial District. And I understand there is a request, you, Mr. Peterson, for consideration of a waiver tonight?
Yes, the Representative Rob Kirk, representing Sterry Trucking, had contacted me today requesting a waiver of first reading. I informed Mr. Kirk that it had already been adjourned without it, but he's here to formally put through the request and to speak and answer questions related to the application.
Yes, we are officially requesting waiving of the first reading.
Let's get your identity and-
Robert Kirk. I'm representing Sterry Trucking. I'm the architect on the project, and president of Coupe Architecture.
Thank you.
We are requesting waiving the first reading of the special use permit, and please have the council take action on the ordinance.
What's our process?
Well, it's, it's the council's discretion if they want to waive first reading. If they do, we need a motion to that effect. They want to have discussion first, if they want to have discussion regarding that motion, we can, we can have it at that time, once the motion is made. If they're, if the motion fails, it would just be first reading only, and then second reading would occur at the next meeting.
All right, so we have a motion, first reading, waiver. Do we have a move?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second for the purposes of discussion.
We have a, we need a motion first.
I'll move it first, and then I'll discuss.
Can I ask a question under first reading? Yes.
Okay. Now, I'll move it for discussion then.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, so discussion.
Discussion, please.
My question is, is this an extension of a new parking facility, or is this making official what the, the current parking facility is that Sterry has?
This is used, is for the existing land that the Sterry is currently leasing from the Chicago Executive Airport. It was determined that, that this parcel never received formal zoning approval back when the use initiated some time ago. So, therefore, once it was officially determined that was wrong, notice was sent to Sterry. Sterry responded appropriately to the notice and applied for the subsequent special use.
So, the scope of this is just what they have now?
Correct.
Nothing beyond that?
Okay.
I had a comment just on the waiver, the first reading. Are there any issues, like any contracts that are timing out that we need to, we have a timeline that this would need to be rushed? No. The main reason we, we would like to put it to rest, they've been operating there for three years, and we got the notice, the formal notice in November. I think it kind of fell through the cracks when Steve left, Skeever left, and we want to clean it up. And we don't think there's anything really controversial about what we're asking for. That being said, I, I don't see any need to waive the first reading. It is a critical issue with, I think lots of discussion might and should take place. Perhaps even other Aldermen might want to drive by the facility, since it's in my ward, sometimes they don't get into that area. So, I, I don't see a need to rush that, so I would not see a need to waive the first reading. Others?
All right. Anyone else before I call? Good question. Yes?
Just that, yeah, I, I agree, too. This is the first time the council's really, I believe, this is the first time the council's seen any action or seen any request for us to act on anything regard, regarding this use. It's been talked about for years, and going all the way back to three, actually, I got a picture here from '15, so we're going on four years almost now that it's been open. So, I don't see any, any reason to rush. We had the bike shop request to change regarding delivery use, which took us months and months to finally get to the right decision, which was right for everybody. So, nobody's telling you to move your stuff off there today, so there's no imminent need to act, I don't think. So, there's a lot of questions I'd like to ask staff, now that we have this in front of us. Some things I think are missing that I'd like to see, and a bunch of questions. So, I wouldn't be in favor of waiving first reading either.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to waive first reading. Roll call, please.
Mike Goodser?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's you.
Thank you. I have legal questions that I'd like to ask both of the airport and of our own legal counsel regarding liabilities and requirements in it being in approved use. So, for that reason, I'm not in favor of waiving first reading.
All right, so we have a roll call to decide whether we want to waive or not.
Joe, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question, if, because this, and once we have this roll call, then we wouldn't be able to ask you a question unless it's okay that we have discussion after the, after the roll call? Is that appropriate?
You could do that.
Right, this is just a motion to waive first reading. If it fails, it's on the agenda for first reading, so it'd be a normal first reading, where you could ask questions of the applicant or his staff.
Okay.
All right, we have a roll call.
Alderman Williamson?
No.
Alderman Messer?
Yes.
Alderman Dolick?
No.
Alderman Rosenthal?
No.
Alderman Ludwicksen?
No.
The motion to accept first reading waiver has been denied. Now, we can keep going, right?
Yeah, we can have a first reading of item-
There was a vote of 5-0 for the record.
So, you can have discussion of item 12G, which is first reading of ordinance O1903.
Okay, someone wanted to have discussion. Alderman Ludwicksen?
Yes. You, you're requesting a special use, and you, you number, you have a specific number that you are asking for, is it 50 or 55?
On the existing, yes. I could, I'm going to have to look that up. Yeah, 55.
So, my question is this, are you downsizing that use? Are you downsizing the project?
No, we're not. We, we are keeping the use that we're using right now, and we're keeping the number of trucks that are there now.
Because there's, I gave some pictures to put up for this. That only shows the south portion. You can't see right along Palatine Road, but there's a whole nother row. There's 100 spots.
Right.
Over 100, not, not even including the Sterry portion, which I would call the Sterry property portion, where they have trailers and trucks parked.
Correct. The Sterry property line runs approximately 100 feet into that parking area of the trucks, Correct. The Sterry property line runs approximately a hundred feet into that parking area of the trucks, so it does overlap.
Peter, can you put up the one that says two thousand thirteen?
It does overlap. No, what I'm saying is the building itself...
One more. Yeah, that's it. So you can see where, I mean, the Sterry portion is, where the telephone poles are, pretty much where that driveway is. I guess my point is, is that right now you have a hundred. Why are you going to go down to fifty-five?
Well...
Or do you plan on it, or just it was a mistake, and it's supposed to be for a hundred?
Well, I think the hundred included a lot of the parking that's on the Sterry's property line.
No, well, that's why I had this picture, so you could see where the Sterry property ends. So, just, I mean, if it's fifty-five, and that's what it is, it is what it is, but there was a hundred trucks parked, a hundred trucks or vehicles that were marking a spot for a truck.
Can we go back to the...
The two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, the two thousand eighteen. You counted a hundred?
Say again?
You counted a hundred?
Yeah. You can't see the top part. There's another row, for whatever reason. On this, it doesn't come out, but it doesn't seem like it, but there are. Do you know how many?
Is that where you're saying that property line was?
A little bit to the right of that, a little bit.
About two spots.
There's three parcels that are in question. One is on the very west side, which is pretty much delineated with the buildings and the passenger vehicles, and it looks like the one trailer with the red cab right there. Then there's a second parcel that is part of this airport's parcel, that is part of the leased land as we move east. And then there's a larger parcel that goes almost over to the green grass area, which is airport property that is technically the ingress egress on the east side of that parking lot. So everybody, and there is a, in the packet, there was a site plan that Mr. Kirk provided that kind of delineated those lot lines that don't reflect well on this image. But the site plan provided by Mr. Kirk did show approximately fifty parking spaces to be leased for the private truck parking lot.
And I saw that drawing. The only thing about that is that the spots that are shown are double or greater, two and a half times the length of what's needed for, you know, a truck with a trailer. So, you know, if those are numbered, and that was all that there's going to be, you know, that would make more sense to me, that you're giving all the users of this twice as much as what they're using right now, because you're going to cut the number in half of trucks. I was just trying to figure that out, if that's what you're trying to do, or what. But there were a couple of other questions. If you go back to that very first picture, the original one before, there's a big spot of water there in the center, right where that concrete is. And as you go through some of the pictures, you'll see it kind of stays there. You'll see a white spot like right there. You can see where that was each time. And I know that you're paving over this, so, and when you go back to the first picture again, you'll see that there are spots that weren't necessarily paved or building before. And I know this used to be a rock crushing the facility, but how do we know that your base is going to be good enough? Are you actually going to take core samples throughout the space? Because there's a lot of this, I think, that was just kind of filled over and maybe paved with light pavement that now is being looked at as being already acceptable.
Right, right. We've started those conversations with both with Dan and engineering, and we've come to the conclusion that a lot of this, you can see the white areas are poured concrete. I think what the crushing and the concrete company that was there before just dumped a lot of the concrete that was left in their trucks. So I think some of that might be as much as five, six feet deep. There are areas that are a little bit lower. That one depressed area, which is the water, is really only about two, three inches deep at the max. But the surface does drain well enough that it doesn't really cause a problem. But we will work with the engineering department to ensure that the base is substantial enough that, once we put the new asphalt on it, that it will be adherent in that.
Is there any stormwater detention or any type of work going on for this?
No, it's just surface drain.
Surface to where? Existing?
It's basically draining towards the Sterry Trucking property to the west, and it's sheet drained right now.
Dan, did that answer your question about the core samples? Because I didn't hear...
Okay, the core samples, there's a variety of different materials that have been compacted over the years, probably over the last fifty years. We will ensure, and we will do a stress test with, in lieu of core samples, we'll have trucks come out that are weighted. It's basically a stress test on the subsurface. We'll make sure that all of those pass. If they don't pass, we will replace those materials. But we will work with the engineering department of Prospect Heights to make sure that's all, that's all acceptable.
Okay, was that discussed with Steve Baretts? I mean, is that...
Yes, we met with Mr. Kirk prior to the plant commission meeting, and in lieu of digging all the surface out due to the uses and stuff, and that the trucks that they were willing to, he was willing to do a site test, and those spots that did not pass would have to be built up and made stabilized to handle the loads. That was discussed.
Because we own part of the airport, you know, and so we have a dual role here. When you encapsulate all that, and you put down your four inches or six inches or whatever, you have to put down whatever the city requires. Is the airport aware that, you know, when that land, if they have to do anything with it in the future, now all that has to be removed? My concern is that we're, you know, for what little bit they're gaining by having a tenant rent that space, what it's going to cost them, as we know, having gone through the Connor deal that was just approved before you, it's a big deal. It's a big expense. Is the airport, do we have anything that the airport has signed off on what's going on with this? I know you're a tenant, and they're not objecting to it, but have they approved this?
We have email from the airport indicating that they're supporting their tenant's application, but we do not have any commitment that the airport's going to do any of the work or expend any resources on it. My conversations with Mr. Sackus, our economic development coordinator over there, or director of economic development, is that the airport is not going to expend any money in this issue. And if the applicant is seeking the special use and do it, the expenses will be solely bearred by the applicant.
That is correct. Sterry Trucking is committed to bringing the parking lot up to city standards.
I guess my concern is what happens when you're done with it, you know? The airport's still going to own it, we're still going to own it, and now it's going to all be removed.
You bring up a good point. I did make a recommendation to ownership that, as these are improved, that they get a longer lease for this use. If they are going to do that kind of capital improvement, that at least they should get maybe a longer lease signed up.
Your capital improvement today is somebody else's remediation later, so...
Well, it's an improvement to it. It's not a, it's not a change.
For your use, correct, I agree. But not for whatever else it might be used for in the future.
But still, if it does improve the structural integrity of the sub-base, that's an improvement that they wouldn't have to...
Assuming there's no organic material underneath that sub-base that's there now...
There's always organic material if they're deep enough, yeah.
No, I mean, I just know what Connor had to go through and what we held them to. And it just seems to me very unusual that you have a site that you're going to encapsulate like this, not really knowing enough about what's underneath it and call it an improvement. I mean, if it's not right, it's just going to come up. I mean, it's just...
Well, I...
I know we can assume that it was rock crushing, and there's all kinds of...
No, no, I know that.
Stone underneath there, but we don't really know that.
But we've had three years of operations on this site, and we've had no substantial areas that have been weak and not supportive of these heavy trucks. So we have confidence that the sub-base is stable and structurally sound. And again, we'll have it investigated with the city to make sure it is.
Especially that center spot, because...
I think there's concrete under it. Yeah.
Yes, sir. I just would like, one, some clarification. Are we talking about fifty-five spots or a hundred and ten spots? I'm not too sure what we're dealing with with this thing now.
Well, this is my take on that. When I laid it out, I didn't count how many trailers they have on site, but I laid it out according to the graphic standards of what the size of a large semi is. And it's supposed to allow twelve feet in width and approximately seventy feet in depth. That's how I laid it out. And they tend to squeeze in a lot more than what the standards are supposed to call for. You're supposed to allow enough room to get in between. But they, if they squeeze in a hundred, and we have the fire lanes and the bumper stops and everything else in place, then it's a hundred. But I laid it out according to what it would be according to graphic standards.
Do we have an approval, disapproval on the head of this, or can they lay it out any way they want?
What the special use approves, what the council approves tonight, based on the request of the applicant, is the standard that they will be held to. So the question then becomes, is your client understanding that there could be a substantial reduction in the amount of trucks that used based on the application and potential approval of this ordinance as applied for? Because if you say you're putting fifty in there, and that's what the special use for, and we go out and check, and there's a hundred, that's not in keeping with what was sought in the special use application.
Dan, can I ask that you raise the question with the fire department and find out if they find to be in appropriate use as well, or in appropriate density? Because I mean, if you're putting a hundred of these trucks in a space that was designed for fifty-five, and the one in the middle has a fire, because I mean, we have no idea what's in these trucks, you know, is it allowing them enough room to take it in there and fight the fire?
I will recheck with Deputy Chief Jones. The initial discussions are that they had, they did not have an issue with the current number of trucks and conditions. Their biggest issue was accessing, keeping clear with aisles, turn radiuses, so they could access wherever an incident may be.
That's, well, I mean, that's my concern.
If I could ask a couple of questions as well?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I had that same concern. Some months ago, I happened to do a ride-along with our police department, and we went back in that area. And in the officer's opinion, I realize he's not a firefighter, but it was clear that there was no way that fire equipment could navigate that and get to a fire situation. So that would be a big concern. Additionally, I've also, I live near that area and drive past it frequently. I've often seen other equipment. For a long time, there was a large front-end loader. There was other, what I would consider, construction-type equipment being stored there. Is that part of this, or would that be something that you would still allow, or would that, according to this, not be allowed?
Again, I think we're looking at the overall picture on improving the site. And with my conversations, with my recommendations to ownership, and they've agreed to it, is to also improve, it doesn't show it, but the north and south property lines, one along Frontage Road on Palatine Road and then Piper Lane, we are going to install a landscape buffer and a six-foot-high cedar fence. And along with that, construction equipment, he does have a back hole, and he's aware that he won't be able to store that on this parking lot any further. And so we want to improve the lot, so it's beneficial to both the city and to his business. Now, as far as the number of trailers that he could fit in, I guess we're going to have to go with, the lanes are going to have to stay. So all turning radiuses are maintained. That's a life safety issue. Whether or not they can squeeze in X number of trailers, you know, one foot apart, that is something I'm sure he's going to want to do. So I'm probably going to have to amend that as long as it's okay with fire and police. But the aisles are going to have to stay true to safety standards.
Okay, and that is a safety issue, but again, it seems like we're talking about an abstract number here. I thought that this was an approval of a specific number, and it sounds like you're saying, well, as long as it's safe, we'll squeeze in ten or twenty more. I have an issue with that.
No, I understand. I understand. And this is the first time this has really been brought up, and we've had, I've had at least four meetings with Dan, and we went in front of the board and reviewed the site plan. And really, it's the first time that's come up that the photograph shows something substantially more than what...
And a couple of other quick questions. It's my understanding, as I read through this, that it is for an approval of truck parking only, not repairs on that lot.
That is correct.
Would take place inside the facility, or...
Absolutely.
Because I, I demeaned, I've seen parts, whatever they may be, axles, wheels, almost like they're being scavenged from one truck to another. And that, again, seems like another unsightly event, but also another safety issue, where I'm assuming from what I read here that that would not be allowed. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. The city ordinance, section five dash eight dash one, the general provisions for off-street parking will be adhered to. And one of the issues specifically says that there's no sale, repair, or servicing of any vehicle that takes place, and that will hold true.
Okay, and one, I'm sorry, one last question, and then I'll be done. The trucks or owners, they lease these spots from Sterry, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, again, I would ask clarification from our city. They have to have parking stickers, is that correct? Is it, if that's correct, my question is, are we leaving it up to those owners to get their parking stickers? Or once they contract with you with that lease, does Sterry come out and say, we have X number of trucks, we need these, just so that it's easier to track and maintain? I'm sure officers are not going to go back. When they go back there late at night, they're looking for somebody roaming around that doesn't belong there. They're not going to be checking each individual truck. It seems like a much easier way to track this if Sterry said, we only allow so many trucks, whether it's fifty-five or whatever gets approved, that they buy that many stickers, and we have a clear record of who is there and who has a sticker.
I think that's a very good point, and again, it's the first time that that's come up. But if I was on the board, I would make that part of the provisions. I don't think there's anything wrong with, I mean, I live in Prospect Heights, and I pay for my sticker. So if somebody is looking at spaces, they should be paying for stickers. So I think that's the first time that's been brought up, and I have no problem with forwarding that on to the ownership.
Just said, Alderman Delik, just to answer your question, it would be the owner of the vehicle's responsibility.
So there's no, there's no way to do it in the way that I...
The property owner, if they're permitting, storing the vehicle on the property, any vehicle stored on city property is required to have a city sticker. So it would be the vehicle owner's responsibility, but the property owner should have a requirement that if you're keeping trucks on their property, that those trucks have, they'll have city stickers.
So it would be up to them to police that?
Well, let me add something. We talked about this at length some time ago, because Alderman Ladikson and I in particular were pretty high on leasing the price for a city sticker for eighteen-wheeler. And at that point in time, we were shown a lease that these people have to sign. They have to have a document giving them the ability to park in that space. And part of that document called for the owner to apply for a city sticker. I can tell you, we have records of that, at least the extent, the number, the total numbers. And it wasn't that long ago, last issue of City Stickers, that we cited them and said, hey, you're not buying all your city stickers. So there is a control factor there.
Okay, and that's all I...
I can tell you, the guy came in within two hours and paid whatever was missing, and then it became his problem to collect the first truck for all.
I just wanted to make sure that there is an easy way to track that.
My recommendation at the time was two hundred and fifty dollars for a truck, but I'm not sure where we're at. Peter, do you know?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please, sir?
How much is a city sticker for a truck?
It is two hundred and thirteen dollars for a vehicle over sixteen thousand one hundred pounds, which would be an eighteen-wheeler.
All right, it's a bit lower than we discussed, but nevertheless, it's well over two... All right, it's a bit lower than we discussed, but nevertheless, it's well over two hundred dollars. Certainly not low. There is control over the city sticker.
Thank you. I defer to Alderman.
I, thank you. I just wanted to clarify something. You mentioned that there are plans to do something along the Frontage Road area to make it, along the aesthetic lines, to make it more attractive or at least block out some of the ugliness that's right there, that's there right now.
Yes, sir.
So that's part of your plan as well? And then when we, we'll see what that, you'll show that to us at least when?
Well, it has been submitted to Dan and Dan has included it in the package, the landscape plan and the site plan.
Rob, you'll recall that the requirement was along the access road, there'd be arborvitae, arborvitae or fitters or whatever, what exactly the owner is talking about.
Yes, sir.
That was never done. So it'd be time to catch up.
Exactly. I think all of us are going in the right direction in that we want to, we want to make it organized and safe. It has been a safe operation. Police department has not visited the site with any calls. And there has been no real complaints in three, there hasn't been one complaint in three years of operation. So they do run a nice, clean operation, but I think it's time to bring the site up to the city standards.
Yes.
Good.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
You know, this is a first reading discussion. I don't want to spread all that on him because he's going to come back anyway.
I haven't spoken yet.
I'm not speaking directly to you or making a point.
No, I just had a question. I didn't know if two weeks is enough time before our next meeting for you to have a new site plan showing the actual use, how many spots are going to be there and all the other items that were brought up that we discussed or if you'll need more time to...
Well, I think that's the, that is the main issue. It's dimensioning the aisles, which we have. But discussing with them whether or not they could live with fifty true parking spaces or if they really do need more.
How'd that number come up?
The fifty? From my graphic standards, which is my standards in my office, you know, they give you the size of what you really should allow per semi truck. And that's the size that I...
But your client had to have something in mind when it came to you.
Who?
Your client.
My client parks, you know, he would park fifty where you could park, you know, ten.
Just a couple more things that came up about the vehicle stickers. You are correct, Mayor, we have, I've brought that up before in the past. And the applicant made a point about making the improvement to the property. It's important to point out you're making the improvement in order to get a permitted use, so, to get a special use.
Special use, right.
So you're not improving it, you're improving it to get, the driving force here is a special use. You're improving it to a standard that would allow a special use to occur. I don't think, if you don't get this approved, you're not going to go through with paving that property.
That's correct.
Safe assumption.
That is correct.
So it's the use that's driving this, not the improvement. The other thing is, I'd asked Peter to look up the number of stickers that we have. And given that there was a hundred trucks, a hundred spots, and I know you keep looking at it, you go back and Google Earth it and check it yourself, there's only been forty-five stickers issued for that property. So we're fifty-five short. And that, that's just on that property. It doesn't include the trucks that are on the STERI portion. So people were asking here about how do we make sure, how do we ensure? And you said, well, there's an ordinance. It said, the user right now is not following the ordinance. So forgive us if we're a little touchy about when somebody says, well, your ordinance, you have an ordinance that says you can't do that. Well, it doesn't mean that people don't do it because there's a lot of things going on there that are not acceptable or allowed by code. So it's our job to make sure that we tighten that up.
Absolutely. I've got no argument with that.
Rob, let me just say something. You said earlier, you're working with a twelve-seventy plan. We really might be talking to the wrong person about what should be done. You're an architect. You're not the owner. You're not the operator, right? So if a twelve-seventy plan is standard, let's call it, then they ought to do that. If it causes safety problems, then they will have to do more. I think you're just the messenger, so.
Absolutely.
It's not like we're trying to do something.
No, I understand. I understand.
Toward, to you personally.
Now, as far as the stickers, I do want to ask a question. If they are storing trailers only, are there stickers for trailers or is it just the cab itself that gets the sticker?
That's an interesting question. What do you say?
I'll have a look at the code, but I think, I don't think a trailer was qualified.
I think it's operable vehicle.
It's operable vehicle.
So going back to the hundred, probably...
But our ordinance wouldn't allow you to store trailers there. That would not be vehicle parking.
The special use is for a private truck parking lot, which...
Has to be an active truck.
Correct. That's because, and I've talked to the ownership group and they say, yes, we lease this, so a person can truck, park their rig. They come in, they park it, they have their personal car, they go, they come in a day or two, drop the personal car off, take their truck and go. So if they're just then now storing trailers, that's a different, that becomes a different use.
If I also can add, because Alderman Lovickson brought up the point about maybe under-stickered vehicles or non-stickered vehicles being parked there, you can make as a condition of the special use that all vehicles stored or parked, I should say, on the property are to be properly stickered. And if they're not, then the owner is violating the terms of the special use and you can revoke it. So, I mean, that would be, that would incentivize the owner beyond, you know, the city code to ensure that the vehicles that are being parked there comply with the city requirements.
But Kevin, if you have the situation we're talking about, only a trailer is sitting there, are you going to force them to buy two city stickers, one for the trailer and one for the cab?
Well, by the terms of the special use that's before us, they wouldn't be permitted to park just a trailer, it has to be an operative vehicle.
So are you going to shoot them or what's the...
Or you modify the special use. I mean, the point of a special use is, you're going to define, you're defining the specific use and it's being limited to that. So if they want a hundred vehicle or a hundred parking spots, they ask for a hundred parking spots in the special use. If they want trucks and trailers, both either together or separate, they ask for that in the special use. That's how you would approach it. And whether or not the council or the PZVA wants to approve it is up to them.
All right. Obviously, there's a lot more work to do. Hopefully, we're done by, we're done with questions.
Sir, I'm not done. If I could ask a couple of questions.
Alderman Williamson.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Rob, I hope you understand now why we didn't, you know, we didn't waive first reading because we all have a lot of questions.
I was going to withdraw after the first two comments.
But I'll direct my first question to Director Peterson. Don't we have, don't you have to screen on all sides that are visible?
The ordinance does require screening on the front and side or rear and sides. And in this situation, due to the vacancy of the properties to the east, it was not looked at as necessary for this particular use.
With the exception of, it's a vacancy to the east, but as you're traveling down that road, there's a visual for every car that's looking at it. So it's not necessarily...
Coming up the Willow...
Coming down Palatine Road.
Palatine Road.
And that obviously was a concern for everybody. In addition, I'd like to bring up that our ordinance or our code only requires a screening of, that's six-foot-high with evergreens that are, you can start at four-foot. But we're talking about trucks that are thirteen and a half foot tall. We're not talking about, you know, screening out something smaller than that. So my recommendation would be, because this is a special use, we can incorporate different requirements. And I would say that those shrubs would need to be, say, ten-foot tall. So you're actually blocking something rather than putting something that's blocking the tire. I don't know, I did not see the landscape plan.
I had three-inch, three-inch evergreens in deciduous. The mayor brought up an interesting point that we did have this conversation years ago, that they were going to put up arborvitae.
Okay.
I think it was a minimum of twelve, fourteen feet high.
Right now, if you want an example, you can just walk out your back door. Hibern Church along Kennelworth.
Yeah.
Going east from Schombach. They've got a nice warm screening of fourteen, sixteen feet of, I think they're fitters, they might be arborvitae, I don't know.
No, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Those are the ones I envisioned when we first talked about all this.
Right. It took a long time to get there though. Because when I first moved in, they were much shorter, they may have been eight feet tall. And if you look at what they did on the east side of the parking lot there, they put in the four-foot arborvitae that are there today. You know, I'm personally, I'm looking for something that would be a more immediate impact, something that...
Can't you just buy sixteen-foot-high?
No, no, no. I understand they have to grow into it. But, you know, to buy a ten-foot tree, I mean, it's, you can buy a ten-foot bush like that.
Well, I went out to a, to a place that sells, the highest I could get was twelve feet. So I would say, start there, you know.
You want to make them taller, I'm game.
You can't start with four feet.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I just think that you're talking a decade or more before it even gets to a point where it's shielding something.
Right.
But I do think that that needs to be carried down that eastern, that eastern side. Maybe not the whole way, but, you know, certainly...
Maybe the length of a truck, yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, that's, that's one of my concerns. And then, of course, there's been a lot of good points that have been brought up tonight. And I think we need to establish what kind of a requirement, Mr. Peterson, that we're going to require between these trucks. Rob, you're exactly right that STERI would, you know, put these trucks twelve inches apart if they could. So I think that we need to come up with, you know, some guidelines as well that are reasonable.
Right.
Because you certainly need to have, you certainly need to be able to have people passage between these trucks.
Yeah. It's very interesting because in a perfect world, you know, every parking space would be exactly the right size.
Be like Costco.
Yeah. But we're dealing with a successful businessman that, you know, likes to be successful.
Sure.
So we have to balance this out.
I agree. But thank you, that's all my comments.
All right. Should we move on? Thank you. So are we going backwards?
Yes, sir, we are going back.
Thank you, Rob.
Back to the earlier direction of workshop discussions. Tonight is the budget discussion, preliminary capital improvements plan. And I'm going to preface this, just to underscore the importance of this. I think, I think this is my greatest concern for the long-term future of the city. And that's our ability or inability, however you want to look at it, to address capital reinvestment and improvement within our community, giving the anticipated revenue stream. And Mr. Ducharme is going to talk about this in more detail tonight. But as you know from every year, and we've addressed this previously, it's not a surprise to the community, we identify upcoming capital needs. And some of them are standard reinvestment items such as street resurfacing or street reconstruction. A street has a given life. We anticipate, I think we use about a fifteen-year benchmark. That's reinvestment. Then there's also the consideration of improvements. We have neighborhoods, two of them we identified last year for stormwater management projects. And these have been, needs have been for a long time. Arlington Countryside and the east side have been identified because they're maybe a particular concern. But we also have several of those. I think from earlier Christopher Burke study to address some of the stormwater management improvement, this is a study maybe about five years ago. I think at that time, they identified about eight-point-five million dollars' worth of improvements. Some of those Arlington Countryside, some of them were the east side. As the council's aware, we've also placed, we've developed the capital improvement fund and we funded that with some one-time revenue sources. We took some money, the balance of the solid waste fund, and there's a logic to that because those are probably the biggest terror of our streets. A multiple-axle truck of heavy weight is worth thousands of vehicles. So there's logic to contributing from the solid waste fund to that. We also have earmarked earlier through a resolution, we earmarked the upcoming proceeds of the sale of land to stormwater management improvements. All those are good things, but the difficulty I foresee is that we're eating our seed corn. And the pace, we did great. You know, it's interesting. You're very proud of doing improvements. And last year, we did, for several years, I think the most we did in streets for several years, we, it took care of a number of streets. But the bad side is the money that you spend. I think we spent about one-point-five million dollars last year. That rate is not sustainable. So, I mean, we do have options. In previous years, we went to a bond issue. Another option is what the city has done is just basically ignored the need for improvements. There have been a number of neighborhoods that, I personally, I almost feel like if it threatens to rain, they start flooding. And I just don't think we've, we haven't had the resources to address that. It's a concern. So with that, that's the, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ducharme. But I really want the council to think about this because this is for long-term needs of the city and not just year to year. The operating budget, we'll spend time on that, that's pretty static. There's not too much changes in that. And we're, as you know, we run light. I think we also have two, Mike, I believe, two, there's only two authorized positions that have not been filled, one public works and one police. You can compare us to staffing-wise, we run very efficiently. But the big concern is capital reinvestment in our community and also the ability to address, I believe, needed improvements. Maybe that's arguable to some people, but some of our neighborhoods that consistently have severe flooding, that's a problem, so. And at that, setting up with the good news, I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Ducharme.
Just a few points that I'd like to make. And then we can try and tackle any questions you might have or continue the discussion. The plan that's in front of you is a fairly comprehensive five-year capital plan for fiscal years ending twenty through twenty-four. The total amount of the improvements in here are thirteen-point-six million. The, at the, based on the funding that we currently have available, we're showing a deficit during that five-year period of three-point-three million dollars. But I would like to add that from the sale of the property on Piper Lane, we have not included that two-and-a-half million dollars. So it's three-point-three less the two-and-a-half million. The good thing that I could say is, in all of my years of developing capital improvement plans, I have never seen one where there was a surplus of money. There's always more projects than there are money available. So you shouldn't feel bad that we're showing a deficit because no one's able to fully fund the project. My concern here is that we're pretty much taking into account every available dollar we believe we could use for capital improvement purposes to fund these improvements. And one of the first things that I saw when we, with the numbers that were being put together here, for a community the size of Prospect Heights, I don't think, especially being non-home rule, I don't think we have the ability to put a million and a half dollars or two million dollars into street resurfacing. I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I'm just saying that based on that cash flow to make that work, I don't know that that's a sustainable number that we'll be able to hit going forward. And my concern is, if we can show this working for three years or even the five-year period that's out there, that's wonderful. But I'm wondering where those dollars are going to continue to come from in years five through ten. Because each... Because each year we do this schedule, we're going to add another year to it, and we're going to constantly update this on an annual basis. The projects we're showing are real projects. Going forward, some may move to a year and some may be a year quicker, but bottom line, we feel that we have all of the projects covered. We've used the benefit of Steve and the engineer, or the engineer, to give us the most realistic costs he has to put into this so that we feel we're working with good numbers. It's only a preliminary plan, we can adjust these numbers. It will come down to the city council in terms of what's actually approved, but I think it's a good plan to start with. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sir, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Responsible, you're saying, we were told day one that we couldn't sustain a capital improvement program, yet it would be a good idea to establish one. And I want to say, how long are we going back? Six years, something like that, when we originally started doing this? But as we were told, we'll never get there, we'll never get there, and you're saying, well, we're $3.3 million in the, in the red, yet we haven't included the 2.5 million that we're contributing. Well, we've done a pretty good job of sticking with it, okay? So if you go back and you, you know, go year by year, so we're 150,000 light every year?
Okay.
The point was, we have found ways to, we have found ways to fund it each and every year. And the whole point of it was at the beginning, was we had just gone through a road bond, and we never, ever wanted to see those roads get back to where they were when they started. And if we have to go to a bond every time that we want to redo roads and keep them in, in drivable shape, well, they're going to end up like they were before, till, so it gets to the point where everybody's so sick and tired of running into a pothole that, you know, we have to go out, they're, they're going to say yes to a bond. So I guess my point is, yes, we're projecting out lofty goals, something that we're trying to get to. And like I said, we've done a pretty darn good job of getting there. But if we go and reduce it, then we'll fall short of those goals. I'd rather have a goal that's too far-fetched to get and try and strive towards it than never have it.
I, I understand and I hear those comments. The only thing that I'd say to that is, in all of the revenue sources I look at related to capital improvements, there's no sole revenue source funding capital improvements. All of this money that I started seeing when I started here, came from this plan that was developed a number of years ago, that created all these service charges within funds, I think, to build up this annual amount of money that was going to continue to come in, which was, it was hoped would continue to fund the capital improvements. And I guess the first point I'd make is, I believe we demonstrated that for a number of those service charges, that we couldn't continue to do that, which then decreases that amount of money that everybody thought would continue to be there to fund that. Now please, I am not saying there are not ways that we can't fund that, but there are going to have to be changes to what we're doing now. And I say that because last year, I think we demonstrated that there is a control in terms of the operating budget that's there. I think that is controllable. But if you're relying on money that's going to be left over in the operating budget to fund the capital budget, that means we're going to have to cut things that we're currently doing in the operating budget to free up those funds to make them available for capital. I'm not saying there won't be some increased revenue going forward, yes, there probably will be. But based on the fact that we are non-home rural and there are limitations of what we can do, I don't want to give anybody some false sense that somehow this is just going to take care of itself. Because there are some pretty significant improvements that will need to be made in the future, and I just want to make sure that we're thinking about them far enough ahead so we have a reasonable chance to fund them. Yes?
Are the plan, is the plan we're going to use for reviewing the budget much the same that we implemented last year?
If, if that's what you felt worked for you, will, Joe, you're probably a better...
Yes, absolutely. We'll, we will have upcoming time for the operating budget where we go department by department. And each of the directors will present their budgets for, for discussion questions. As mentioned, at least preliminarily, and we're, we're working through this, there's, there's not many changes in that. That's a pretty, pretty static budget. The area that Mike and I are inviting your specific attention to, not to just think for this coming year, but for, for several years, is the capital.
No, I, I recognize that.
That's the, that's the 800-pound gorilla.
Yeah, that during the home, home rule thing was what the focus was.
Yeah.
There...
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's, I hate to talk like the old guy here that's been through everything, but, but I have, Jim was here too, and he remembers it.
But you are.
Rich.
You are the old guy here, Pat.
Well, I am. I don't look like that anymore, that's for sure. But, I mean, in the old days, old days meaning the mid-2000s, we had to decide if we were going to eat our left arm or our right arm, you know? Those were the decisions we had. The idea of replacing cars in the police department squad cars was a luxury. I mean, we ran those cars up to the excess of 100,000 miles, and they were, they were held together by, by shoestring. And we're, we're far from that right now. And the problem is, is, you know, everything's cyclical. We're going to be going back to a time where our revenue's not what it is now. And these are the good times. And if we don't decide that we need to sock away some of this money and have, I agree with Scott, that, that we need to stick with our capital plan. The problem is, we need to, the difference is, I think we need to recognize what our capital plan is to say, we have a program to replace the roads, to replace cars, and we have to put that to paper like it's done here, so that we see what the needs really are. What we have in front of us doesn't even take us out to replacing all the roads. This only goes out five years, it doesn't even go and take care of 100% of the roads to be recycled since the last time they were done. The roads that we just did this last year really weren't part of, they weren't part of the original street program. They were done through MFT money that was done right before, a few years before the bond sale for the road program to happen. So the roads that were done now really aren't being replaced that were done under the street program before. They were, they were done before that bond issuance.
Can I respond to that real quick, Pat?
Yeah.
We, we do have a road program in place, and it is an annual program, and it gets updated every year. So it's not the same program we ran eight years ago. It's a new program that breaks it down into smaller sections, smaller bites, and is not $5 million a year.
No.
It's a couple million dollars a year.
But we see that there's an end to it. I think the difference between how we used to do our accounting before is we had the blinders on and said, look, we could do a million dollars worth of roads, let's do it. We have a program, we're getting it done.
Right.
Now we look at it and say, we're projecting out, there is no possible way we can sustain this, absolutely not. But should we leave on this year coming up to say that our engineer says these are the roads that need to be done first? Yeah, we need to know that. But I think what staff is saying is, instead of saying we're going to replace that road, maybe what we should do is not change our standard, but say, okay, we're not going to go grind up a road because it's on a list, or because our engineer says it only scores an 88 out of 100. We're going to say, maybe we're going to go out and do some remediation work, and instead of spending the 120 on this road that we had budgeted, we spend 15. And, and we, we keep that money in the bank and then change kind of our standards to say that in the future, we're going to have to go back and do work on this road. We can't keep going. The idea that we just plow forward and say, spend the money because we got a 10-year or eight-year replacement program, and, but when we hit that wall, then we'll have to figure it out. Or to say, we've always had revenue come in, we've had revenue come in from this thing called the tri-state expressway that was supposed to be ran and rode. We sold a piece of property when, when Aldi's was, was built, that we had $300,000 came in, that was capital. That's how we bought, did things that year. And it's that way, every single year, we have some, something one-time revenue that comes in, that we're able to do this. But we have our police cars in our capital program. So I don't, I think we have to look at that as being, that, that's a hard cost. I mean, that, that's not something that's optional. I don't think we can say we're not going to buy cars for five years and live with that. Can we do that with the street? We can say we're not going to replace it, we're only going to fix the edges that are bad, or, or grind up and fix the sections that are bad. And I think that's the decisions that we're being asked to be made now. Our operating budget, I've always said, we can do that five years forward and be within 5% or 3% of what it is. We know what our labor contracts are, we have an idea of what inflation is and what we're spending money on. And, you know, that, that's easy to do. The hard part is deciding policy-wise what to do with our capital program. I think we need to ride it out like we do, and I agree with you, Scott, it's, it's a plan, we have to stick with it, but we have to decide each year if we're going to do that or not, and then defer it for a period of time.
And we have. I mean, in my eight years with you, that's all we've done. And prior to establishing that capital program, has, has it been six years, five years, six years that we've had it now?
It's been, yeah, about five, five years.
Okay. But we've done very little with it. And then when it came time to do, sorry, I forget the name of the area with Toma and Toa and all those roads, boom, it went right to the program. And it was done exactly that way. And that was really our first true experience with it, outside of some smaller drainage work.
We bought equipment.
Yeah, some equipment, yeah.
Right. Police cars.
But now we're, now we're looking, because we've been able to accrue some of that money, we're looking at larger projects. We're looking at drainage over in Arlington Countryside, we're looking at, you know, projects like that. And I, I agree, we, we need to maintain that program. I've been told for eight years that I'll never be able to put money in it, and somehow, I, I believe in the science, but the reality has been, there's always been this money to throw at it. So, I don't know where I'm going with this, but I'm, I'm proud of what we've established thus far. Hi, Larry.
Just a comment, what you said, there's an old management axiom that says, make your plan and then work your plan.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we should be doing.
Right.
Buy lottery tickets.
Bye. So at least preliminarily, we've identified projects, and we'll come back to this issue again to prioritize things. But we also really, working with Steve Perez in engineering, we, we didn't want to just leave things out. That's, that's the easiest way to balance it. We really tried to identify what, what we believe are needs, whether it's in stormwater management, or, or street resurfacing, or, or other objects, other items. And we'll go from there. We'll, we'll be back at this as, as well as with the operating budget.
Could you at least provide you with something, in terms of seeing what the numbers are on an annual basis?
Yeah.
Which makes it a little easier when we look at the operating budget.
I think the, the part that we've never dealt with, that we need to, that you probably have more experience with and can help us with, is how do we recognize that we're putting off something that keeps the plan going, the kind of account, you know, bookmark that, okay, we didn't do this street, we just kind of did minor repairs, maybe we have some rating system, we only did a one out of a five on it, five being a replacement like we thought we were going to do, and kind of move those forward as we keep pushing the plan further and further out into the future.
I, I think one of the things that I could tell you, just from working with these plans, is if you take the time to make sure all of the things that are important to you are included in the plan, it would be easier, easy for us to show you those you were able to fund and complete, and those projects that somehow, for whatever reason, get missed in a year. Because the projects that get missed in a year don't just go away. But the problem is, sometimes they don't get carried forward. So once we have the list, it's one thing to be able to fund it, but we have to continue to be able to push the projects that don't get done. And very soon, you start to see that what you thought was a problem is now a major problem because you've now added one number to another. And as long as we keep tracking all of the projects, I promise you, we will never be able to fund them all. But as long as we deal with the top priorities and complete them, and complete them in the year you approve them, we will be better, in better shape in the end.
I think also, we, we plan on continuing, last year, we made a significant change in the capital improvement plan. We did identify the upcoming expenditures vaguely, as like a class of expenditures, road resurfacing or stormwater. We, we provided a specific project, an identified area, identified streets, and then within that, we also recognized where their, where their different funding sources, was there MFT money involved? So we, we are reeling, and we'll continue this as long as, unless I hear otherwise, but I think we offered much greater detail beginning last year than what we had previously. Prior to that, it was more of a broad project description of million, a million-dollar streets, but we didn't identify which streets, which year, which funding sources, things like that, so.
Is that something, Mike, that's still probably our biggest, you know, biggest source of revenue that we kind of have set aside, that we really don't account for to use right now, is MFT money? Because we really don't have that factored into this plan?
I...
MFT money?
I think we do.
So you, you're moving the MFT money to the capital?
We show, we show for street resurfacing, if there's MFT money available, we'll show. We may not show it every year, because if you look at it from the standpoint, based on the amount of MFT revenue we take in annually, annually, it's not enough to fund a project by itself. It's almost like you'd need two years of MFT money or more to make it cost-effective. But in the meantime, we other, have other capital improvement dollars that we can supplement it with. But we will always show you, if there is money available, where it's available, and if we know we can use it, we will use it when we can.
So you're saying that MFT money...
Yes, yes, sir, I believe it is.
That's about, about 500,000?
Yeah, a little shy of that, yes.
Okay, okay.
All right, you go. That said, anything else, Mike?
That's all, thank you.
We'll be coming back at the next meetings through, through March, and we'll, also we'll have a special meeting in April for, for a budget meeting as well, so. This is kind of the first thing we, we just want you to start thinking about, maybe the longer-term issues.
All right, what's next?
That's it, that brings us down to...
Did we do item 10A?
Oh, I'm sorry, consent agenda. You ever jumped around and lost track?
Yeah, we didn't do 10A.
Consent agenda. And that's just the resolution.
Item 10.
Motion to approve the resolution amending the ad hoc will of road project committee.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have...
Seconds?
So move, second.
So move.
Any other discussions? If not, roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwigson?
Aye.
Alderman Duller?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Warrants.
Okay, um...
Madam Clouse?
Total costs, expenses this period, $254,052. Total costs, expenses this period, $254,052.57. February 1st, 2019 payroll posting, $155,291.71. January Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, in the amount of $16,582.63. And total warrants, the amount of $425,926.91.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have approval, we have a roll call.
Alderman Dolic?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwigson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Master?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 14, public comments.
There, there are none.
And 15, we do have a request for executive session.
Hey, Joe, we have a request for executive session. And can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired?
So moved.
Second.
Call of favor and voice call.
Aye.
We have the motion passed. We will go into executive session.